For Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, starting at 6:30 PM. Can you get a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa.
Yeah.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
There. Uh, can we go salute to the flag?
I am the United States of America and to the other where we stand, one nation under God.
So now this is open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor. Or a presiding officer, the public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item at the time it's called. Is there anyone? Here that would like to speak on an item on the agenda? Seeing none, is anyone online? Or any written comment?
We do not have any written comment. And give me a second, let me look online. We do not have any hands raised from our attendees.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment. We've had no presentations tonight, so we'll move to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be proved in a single motion. The town council, town staffer, public may request removal of an item for discussion. So anyone in the council would like to remove an item, staff or the public? Seeing none, can they get a motion?
Go ahead, make motion to approve items 4A through 40.
I'll second.
Roll.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right, and uh, due to the overwhelming presence of in-person attendance, we're going to move the public hearings after the business items. So uh, for business item number six A, this is a presentation by Scotty Lap Foundation in consideration of a request for support of overall project goals and to begin fundraising efforts towards a redesign of the town park skate park. That or?
B. Yeah. Tim, good evening. Um, it is great to see so many people here. Uh, clearly it's a very passionate, passionate topic and um, we're going to go to Southport and then I'm going to have the Scotty Lap Foundation give a short presentation. Um, based in the background, the quarter skate park was in 2017, it was redesigned. Uh, it needed a much-needed facelift. It had been um, some challenges and community needs. Um, they went out and had two community workshops to get some input. Um, the redesign of the park did a fundraising effort to kind of redo the park um, with community members and basically assisted in the park up and running. Um, Amy Lap came in earlier this year, who will meet in a second with a very passionate story about her son Scotty. Um, I did not describe it as well as she does. I will leave it up to her. Um, the passion of a mom is nothing that's uh, everybody wants to deal with a mama bear. So she will explain how great Scotty was and what a great impact he was to the community. Um, kind of little report what we've done so far. Um, she came to the commission in May. Kind of explaining what was going on, what her son mentioned to the community, what the quarter of their image to the community and how important the skate park was and what they wanted to do in a presentation. They came back in kind of a formal um, report in August to the Department of Correct Commission said, here's um, kind of what we want to do. Here's what we've done um, to redesign a skate park. Um, they took this and ran with it. Um, they've been a great group to work with. Um, they had two surveys up very quickly. First survey was up after a community meeting in the park. Um, people came out in force like they did here to kind of show support for um, Scotty and the redesign of skate park. But about 70 people attend and out of that came a survey of do you use the park? What would you like to see in the park? How to use the park? How can you make it better? Um, it's happened. One is that response about 104 people of kind of what the park's about and who used it. From that information, they basically said, okay, our next step is what do people want to see in the park? They quickly developed a second survey that went out around July and was included in attachment two and said, really, what elements do you want to see in the park? What do you use in the park? What benefits you? What elements do you like? What would you like to see improved? And how can this become um, the greatest park handy for skate park and town park? Uh, they've done some great outreach. Um, it went to all the schools and went all the newsletters. Uh, it was posted in our weekly bulletins. Um, and we actually had some QR fires up at the skate park where people could literally scan it. Quickly fill out the code and kind of give a direct input on what they want to see in the park. Um, tonight we're basically uh, if county council expresses support for this next phase, uh, we're going to go to work. Uh, we worked very closely with the Scotty Lap Foundation to basically plan out the next phase would be two more community workshops with the California Skate Park Association. Continuing their fundraising efforts and then um, fundraise to get the Scotty Skate Park uh, fully remodeled uh, from donations from the Scotty Lap Foundation. Uh, right now I'm going to let Amy speak. Uh, get your tissues out. I apologize now. She's amazing. Um, and uh, Amy, it is all yours.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for your constant support. Um, he's been amazing to work with. Um, thanks for having us all here tonight. Um, we um, I'm Amy Lap. I'm Scotty's mom. Um, Scotty's dad and brother back in Tahoe right now. Ryan's in full training mode for ski season, so we've got a lot on our plate there. Um, but uh, I think we can go to the next slide here. So thank you for having us. Um, I just want to tell you a little bit about our son Scotty and then our friend and um, neighbor. I mean, there's a lot of different variations of people here tonight, but Scotty was um, born in 2006 and we lived in San Francisco for about six months and then moved to Tiburon. Um, and we had two boys lived in Paradise K and I was at uh, the town park at least three days a week with the critters. Um, we'd be in there and sometimes we double up morning and afternoon visits to the park. So the park's always been a great place for us. And later in life, Scotty and Ryan were playing competitive soccer there um, with Tiburon Soccer. So we've logged a lot of hours at town park. Um, Scotty really wanted to skateboard when he was tiny, maybe three. Um, so we went to the skate park and it's similar. There was a little remodel that was done, but we were playing around on the metal ramps. They were hot. Um, and they were too steep. He couldn't actually skate it. So he would walk around holding his skateboard and slide down the ramps, which was kind of funny. And I wish I had video of that. Um, so he really liked to watch the big kids in the park um, and thought that that was super cool. So that must have stuck because he started skating again when he was about during COVID was like the height of it. Um, skated a ton around our neighborhood. In fact, our neighbors all talk about him and his big smile, no shoes, skateboarding around our neighborhood. So in 2001, the boys finally broke us down and we moved to Tahoe so they could um, further their competitive free ride skiing. And on in um, February of last year, um, it was actually a comp day at Alpine Meadows and Scotty and Ryan and the kids had finished their comp. Um, and he collided with another kid. They just didn't see each other. His A word is severed and he died um, February 13th of last year. So minutes after he passed away, I looked at our friends and family that were there and I just said, I'm building a skate park. He had approached me in the fall of 21, asking if I could help him organize his friends to build a skate park in Tahoe City because he was friends with the sheriff. Like why? And he said, we um, don't have anywhere to go. So we're getting kicked out of the elementary school. We're getting kicked out of the Safeway parking lot, the bus station, all the places. He goes, but the sheriff's super nice and he always lets me do one more trick before I leave. Um, so that sheriff showed up the day Scotty died and he was like, your son was so polite and I really want to help you any way I can. So I had mentioned I wanted to build a skate park and six weeks later, we had raised $200,000 on a GoFundMe. Um, so I got into the skate park business. Um, next slide, please. So we started the Scotty Lap Foundation. We've had some, a couple of our board members are here now, Angela and Rich. Um, they stepped up to help us out. We've got a few more on the board. Um, our foundation is dedicated to empowering youth by making ski, snowboard and skate more accessible to underserved communities and assisting those athletes in reaching their full potential. Whereas I would say Corder Madera is not an underserved community. It is a skate park that does not allow everyone to use it. Um, it's more advanced. Um, more advanced riders can ride those ramps and the rail makes it a little bit more accessible and the flat concrete, but we would like to create something that beginners all the way to advanced could use. And I would also like to get, work with our skate park design and build on making it so adaptable skaters could also use the park and they can do that in a very uh, several different ways, colored concrete, different things. So next slide, please. So a Scotty Lap Memorial Skate Park is inspired by Scotty. He was fun. Everyone will tell you that. Super creative. Um, and he liked nothing more than when everybody got together to do something. He had this whole posse in our neighborhood of kids going around and everybody was stoked to do different projects. So he liked everybody to be able to do something together, which is what we would like to see in our skate park. Next slide. So what do we envision for the Corder Madera Town Park Skate Park? We would like something that's modern and sustainable. A poured concrete state skate park, which will reduce the noise, requires very little maintenance. Last 20 to 30 years, depending on the conditions with the weather and the sun. And it's a skatable surface for all levels of skaters. We would like it to be inclusive, creative and fun like Scotty and serve all abilities from beginner to advanced. And what we really want is to have a place to honor him where his friends and his teachers and neighbors and family can come and sit at the park and watch the skaters and think about Scotty and a really, really can give back to the community that's given so much to us through this last few years. Trying not to cry, guys. Um, so as Tim mentioned, we had overwhelming support with our meeting that we had at the skate park MR2 surveys. Um, the second design survey was really interesting. We had some great responses. I believe it was 115 responses. We had to the design survey and maybe around the same number of few more for the first survey. Is that right?
Yeah, first one had 141, the second one had 115.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So which I consider a pretty good turnout um, for that. Um, as you can see in the demographics here, we have some pretty strong support. And what was great to see is most of the people that replied are people that use the park. Few of them are here tonight. Um, so we are really, I mean, if you look at the top feedback requests were to add concrete and replace the metal. Um, most people just want a general upgrade. Um, lighting has come up several times, but I don't really think that's our department. I'll leave that to you guys. Um, so we had a good turnout on those and I think Tim gave you a packet that has more information there. Next slide. So the Scotty Lap Foundation will fundraise and cover the costs of the design and renovation. I was just telling Fred, we had a fundraiser, our second annual fundraiser here in Marin. We're a 501(c)(3) now. Um, so we feel like we're the big kids now. Um, we raised somewhere between 80 to 90,000 last Friday with about 170 attendees. And we haven't even really gotten started with going to local businesses. Um, so we're hoping if you guys give us the green light, we can really get guns ablazing and raise $300,000 by December. That's our goal. And I'm glad my board members aren't falling off their seat when I say that. Next slide, please. So um, if we get approved tonight, our next steps, um, well, first of all, we've completed some, some community input and feedback. We got um, unanimous approval from the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, tonight we're here at this meeting and then once if we get the green light tonight, we would like to kick off. We've got a skate park designer that we have been talking to and working with on our Tahoe project as well. Um, California Skate Parks, they build and design skate parks for the X Games and for the Olympics and all over the world. And it just so turns out, no coincidence, that one of the main guys is someone that I went to high school with in Santa Cruz. And when he heard about our project, he's been all in. He's been amazing. So we're going to build something that's sick and that the kids want to come to and that people will want to come and watch. So it's going to be rad. I'm really excited. So if we get the green light tonight, um, Zach's ready to go on public outreach and get some design meetings going. I can get you more information on all the steps, but we'll work on design and development with the community, find out what they want and build what the people that skate the park want. Um, and we would love to get started in January. Um, I think if we got the green light tonight, we'd be able to get a lot of that work done in the beginning and get going on design and development and construction. Next slide, please. So um, our little hashtag is see you at Scotty's. So I hope we can see you at Scotty's here in Corder Madera. That's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, so we can open up for questions. Any questions for staff or for?
Yeah, just mom.
Two, two quick questions. One for staff. Um, is DPW going to be doing any improvements outside of the design? In other words, the fencing landscaping or anything like that, which it seems like it's not part of the design, but it could be. It just seems like we should have some skin in the game.
Yeah, no, I think um, those conversations, we're, we're happy to have those. Um, I don't think it's really defined yet exactly um, what the project is, but certainly the town um, could be part of, uh, obviously um, any components of the project that deal with security, safety and sort of connect that portion of the park to other portions of the park, which maybe needed to look at. So.
Okay.
Um, RJ um, is well aware of this project as well, and I think has been in communication with with the team over here and Tim, so I don't intend to have anything that I'm not.
No, RJ's actually a skater himself and he's looking forward to the project.
And then final design will be signed off by Park and Rec Commission? Okay. That's it. Thanks.
And I just have a question about lighting. You mentioned lighting. Is that part of the plan or how, where does that come in?
Again, we haven't had discussions about, I think, the design at this.
So all of that would happen later. Okay. Bye.
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Um, and I just had a question about where the council comes back into play?
Yeah, so I want to, uh, the thinking right now um, is that essentially uh, tonight is not being asked to approve a particular project. I think um, Scotty Lap Foundation's here to present and to uh, gain the support of sort of moving to the next phase of this project and sort of support for the overall project goals here. Um, I think uh, the way we've discussed it as a team is that this would come back through the Park and Rec Commission um, for design conversations. Um, and they could certainly be uh, the approval body there. Uh, and then as far as the council's involvement yet to be determined, but I imagine there would have to be some discussion. There may be some agreements that we need to work through the council uh, for whatever agreements we have with Scotty Lap Foundation to allow for the work to proceed and logistics and things like that. So um, to be determined exactly how that works.
Is, is the current plan to use the same footprint that's there or to go bigger or what's the, what's the plan as far as that goes?
I think it's, the, the current plan is to use the current footprint. I think if they start these community outreach and there's a big outreach to expand the footprint, that would be something that comes back to Department of Commission. Um, obviously that's different depending on what it'll take on the park, but I think right now I'll hold those Q2 community outreach meetings and kind of see what we get back. And to get that large demand is to expand and if we can expand the park.
Thank you.
All right, uh, so this is premature, but it is something that I find, you know, we did just recently buy the metal, you know, uh, do you know how much longer they might have a lifespan after this, right? Because I know they, they make noise and stuff in the town, right? But in, we would be moving to concrete, but also I feel like they still have life in them. So part of it is, could we explore donating those to another town or municipality or something so that, you know, in, in an appropriate place where it could even further the cause?
I don't know. I'd have to do some research to see if that stuff can be moved and reinstalled somewhere else. I don't know how it was installed. One of them certainly.
It's, it's bolted down.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why it's a little noisy.
Maybe you want to pop up parks somewhere else or?
Might be able to work together on that.
All right, cool. Can you truck it to Tahoe?
Yeah, right. I have friends with big trucks.
All right, uh, and yeah, go ahead.
One more question. So um, about the age range that would be using the park, I know that there's a certain amount of liability that the town carries, but there is an age limit on it. And so I'm, I know that um, looking at the survey, uh, there seemed to be that people wanted to have it for younger children. Um, and just, you know, just to kind of put that out there because I don't know. Town attorney is the one.
Amy Ackerman, town attorney. Good evening, council. Um, I I did send an email out earlier. Um, there, when we, when we look at recreational activity, there's always an element of risk to it, but we enjoy it, we engage in it and people want their towns and cities to provide recreation. So when we look at risk of liability, we look at several factors. So one is um, there are immunities that government has, which protects them from liability. And hazardous recreational activity is an immunity. There is a particular statute that deals with skateboard parks that does use the age of 12. But it doesn't mean that there aren't some other ways to protect younger children. I think we would in the design obviously want to look at making sure that the design elements don't put the little kids at risk. And maybe there's a separate sort of section, the way we're seeing with playgrounds these days where there's like the tot lot and the, the big kid playgrounds so that little kids aren't getting whumped um, by the big kids. So um, so those are the, so we, we look at design, we look at the immunities, we also do regular maintenance and checks to make sure there isn't an equipment failure that would put young people at risk, kids at risk. And we also carry insurance. So we use a really, and we have a risk manager who assists with doing the analysis. So we really, for all of the town's activities, we use a multi-pronged approach to ensuring the community is as safe as possible and the town is also protected from, from liability. So we would do the same here. That is one statute that does give particular protection for 12 and older if they're doing tricks. And I think governments were reluctant to have skate parks um, initially. And so this was an effort by the legislature to give some additional protection um, to persuade governments that, you know, this is, this is an activity that, that you can do without feeling like you're going to go bankrupt.
Yeah, that's one, if I can add to that, um, that's one reason we love skate parks. You know, we live in Tahoe, our kids ski. And just the price for my son to join team this year for skiing, that this is for a coach only. No travel, no equipment, nothing is $5,300. The price of a skateboard and a helmet, what do you guys say? Hundred bucks? 125? Um, because I know you wear your helmets. So um, anyway, so that's what we love about it. It's really inclusive and you know, living here in Marin, team sports are really popular and that's great, but if you don't make the high school team with how many over a thousand kids are at Redwood, you know, what's your alternative if you can't afford to play the club sport? This is a great alternative and it's an Olympic sport and I will get an Olympic skater from Scotty's. That's my goal. So that we, we like that part of it. Anybody can do it.
Um, so it, it brought up a question for me. Um, you know, in, in your vision of the skate park, do you see it as a kind of, you know, the next proving ground for, for Olympics? Or is it also, you know, you talked about Scotty coming when he was little, right? I have three kids. They go and they do all kinds of other world uh, things on skateboards and they swamp, they overwhelm that place and it, you know, um, would you be interested in exploring, you know, like you said, like a pluralistic kind of, you know, diversity of offerings of different types of uh, experiences in the skate park?
Yes. That's what we want. We want everyone to feel like they have a place. Um, right now it's just a little bit bigger than 4,000 square feet. There is um, a paved part on the away from the parking lot towards the grass fields. It's, I think about four or five feet wide. Um, I don't want to get into expansion because I don't want to open up a whole can of worms, but it would be great if we could expand a little bit or maybe we could even do like a little pump track on the side in that area for the smaller ones. But again, I'll refer to the um, the design and build people. They, they do this all the time, but um.
So to staff, you know, if, if ultimately we find that there is huge community support and, you know, sky's the limit, what, is there a process in which we could expand its footprint to give even more offerings?
Yeah, no, I think there's certainly a process. Absolutely. I think um, a smaller expansion is a little bit easier than a larger expansion, I would say. And then the council will be listening and, and, and we'll having discussions relatively soon on the park master plan. And there's a lot of things obviously that are being tried, trying to sort of fit into the park and all the different activities, but certainly you know, I think in the realm of a small expansion, um, that's, that's.
Yeah, and it would be integrated through the Parks and Rad can be a fully vetted process, but there are opportunities if, if the community supports it.
Absolutely.
And then also, you know, we could maybe, if we see that there's interest in a larger park, maybe we start with the first one and with the idea of expanding on to the one side eventually. I don't know.
Phase, phase designing, basically with future funding and that type of.
Right.
Okay. All right, is there any more questions? Okay, uh, so with that, we'll close uh, questioning and open it up for public comment.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item? You have three minutes. Stand up to the podium. Yeah.
Um, I'm Jasper Howe. I'm 15 years old and I go to Redwood and I'm a big skateboarder. Uh, I skate at that park maybe five to six times a week. And a renovation would be greatly appreciated just because it would strongly like build the community and make it a place for people to come. And it, it is that right now, but whenever someone hears about a new skate park, people always come and it's a great way to make new friends and new hobbies for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, hi, my name's Tommy Winship. I'm 16 years old and I live in Larkspur. And I would say I skate at this skate park like three days a week and it's skateboarding just in general is a really amazing sport. It like brings all kinds of people together. I've made some of like my closest friends, one sitting right there that I'll ever meet in my life doing this sport. And I would love to see this renovation. I know that it would bring in a lot of new people to this park and also would help um, younger people be able to use this park and not be so much in the way of other skateboarders. And just having that, those younger kids be able to use the park, it would encourage other people to come and just really increase like the community around the skate park and just, I feel like everyone should be able to experience skateboarding or even just being at a skate park in their life. So I feel like it would be really amazing to have this new renovation.
Cool. Anyone else?
Um, hello, my name is Caroline Muller. I'm 18 and I go to Redwood, but I live in Mill Valley. And I'm not a skater myself, but my brother and his entire friend group is solely based on skateboarding. That is how he met all of his friends and everybody that he hangs out with. And he right now primarily goes to the Mill Valley Skate Park and every time I drop him off there, he is 15 years old. Every time I drop him off there, I see it's a huge horde of his friends, but there's also parents with children and young people, not just skating, but other, other ways to hang out the skate park. And if we could have that in Larkspur and be able to have more options around the skate park would really strengthen the community and just like seeing that there's so many opportunities there at that skate park, knowing that we can like compare with the Mill Valley Skate Park, it would be a, it would greatly increase the. we can like compare with the Mill Valley Skate Park, it would be a, it would greatly increase the, the community that, um, we could have here. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Damon. I'm a different demographic. I'm a little. But I grew up here in Cormodera and I was getting kicked out of everywhere in the world because there was nothing for us to do. So I was a kid constantly in trouble with those police. Um, I think it's awesome that they do more stuff like this. We need more stuff to keep kids off Nintendos and stupid stuff like that. Um, so I think anything they can do to move this project forward is really cool. And you actually do have a pretty famous skater from Cormodera, Pat Duffy. He's not exactly, uh, you know, top, top, but he's definitely well known in the game. Get a hold of him and maybe get him to do some stuff down here. He's only forty-eight.
Everybody wanted to go skate. Very cool.
He kind of manufactured, the Duffy skate, like the manufacturer went into the manufacturing. Yeah. All right. Um, is anyone else that would like to share fantastic information like that?
Hi, uh, Jeff Mosley. I don't have the information that Damian just had. That's pretty awesome. But, uh, I represent a different group. I have a ten-year-old son and we frequent the park all the time. So the idea of, uh, it's a, the park itself is a jewel already. So it's, it's amazing that we have this. And if there were more items that are, were more, uh, you know, more user friendly, uh, it'll be ideal like this, the, the steel portion of it is a little, um, daunting for him. So I'm excited about what's proposed to be there for, I think it'd be a lot better for him. So huge supporter.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one in public, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
We have sixteen attendees, no hands raised and no emailed public comment. Oh, we do have, oh, I guess he changed her mind. A hand went up and then it went down and we don't have any, um, emailed public comment for this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council to discuss. Um, in the end, we're going to provide direction to staff as requested about how to proceed. Would like to start.
I would just first like to say, uh, my condolences to all of you, uh, for your loss. Yeah, I can tell that it was an incredible loss and cannot imagine what you have gone through and the fact that you're turning it into this kind of wonderful positive energy is, uh, is really amazing. And I thank you, all of you for, for what you're doing. Um, I totally support it. Um, and I, I don't want to make it huge, but, um, while you were talking, I was thinking, you know, there's all that area out on the Bay Trail where maybe next up we can do something, uh, long, lean, linear, something cool. Um, so, but this is a great place to start to really turn this into a gem for town park. And I really appreciate all you're doing. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Sure, go ahead, friend.
Yeah, I, I can totally support this also. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the pop-up, which I think was a great event. There's a bunch of kids there plus adults, probably about a hundred people there. And then you did that rather quickly to get that up and running, but I think that showed community support. I also had the opportunity to attend the fundraiser they did, um, I think last Friday night, which was another great event. I think there was like a hundred and seventy-five or so people there. So there, there's definitely community support there. I have no doubt that you have the ability to raise the money. Um, I think you said you raised eighty or ninety thousand and that was like in one night. So I have no doubt you have the ability to do that. I think you have a great process in place going forward, but as far as us group potentially greenlighting it tonight and then moving forward through those steps. Um, I think more important though than anything is at that fundraiser, I had a chance to talk to some of the board members and also some of your friends that were there and some kids also. There's a high level of commitment and intent on your part, maybe to get this done. Sorry, um, and I think that's important. So, thank you.
First of all, thank you to everyone who came to speak and support this project. This is amazing. Um, I am often in that corner of town park myself, uh, playing pickleball, as it were, so not quite as cool as skating. Um, but I see how many kids and adults are out there having fun, getting exercise. It is such an amazing thing for our community already. Um, and I fully support doing whatever we can to make that project better. Uh, the other thing I want to say is that when you are on a town council and a charitable organization comes to you and says they want to raise money to do something wonderful in your community, it can often feel like a gift from heaven. And so it's not hard to feel like, uh, this project is a gift from Scotty himself. So thank you very much for doing this.
It's, it's hard to encapsulate everything you want to say, um, for, you know, as a mother myself. And I just want to say my heart, you know, to all of you. Um, I watched the, one of the earlier videos from the, uh, meeting with the, um, Parks Commission. And, uh, I think I watched that just last night. And, you know, he was just a beautiful, beautiful person and you articulate that so well. And, um, so I'm fully in support of moving this forward for Scotty and also for, I believe it's so important, kids need to move. We, you know, and anything that gets kids moving away from their phones, off the TV, off, you know, social media, um, I'm all for it. I'm a hundred percent in. So, um, I'm really grateful to have this opportunity to vote positively for this.
Yeah, uh, I've been choking back tears the whole time. Just, it's, uh, it's, it's both incredibly beautiful and, you know, sad at the same time. But what a wonderful way to memorialize his spirit, right? Um, I, I grew up, uh, skating and stuff. I, I went to Santa Cruz, worked at O'Neills, you know, and, and my, my son, my oldest, uh, took lessons from the Parks and Rec and can do the big half pipe. And it, there's nothing that makes me more proud. It's a really difficult sport, really. Um, one of the most complex and it's individual pursuit. You know, it's a lot different than team sports, which I was talking, you know, that's an inclusive and diversity kind of offering that we can give to the community, um, that really caters to underserved youth, um, especially in this community. So it's fantastic in that way. Um, you know, I have seen some of the larger skate parks like McGinnis that has like an entirely like mixed bowl, like different kinds of bowls, different skill levels and stuff. And how, you know, different subgroups within that culture basically use the different things at different times of the day and all kinds of stuff. It's really quite something to see a well-designed skate park function. And I'm very excited about that. Um, and so I too can also support it. Um, and I really am glad that it gets a name assigned to it and it's a, you know, it's a beautiful thing. So I can also support this. So, um, ultimately are we looking for any kind of vote or acknowledgement or is it just direction to proceed?
I think um, Amy said the direction was, um, well provided. So I think we don't need an official motion.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for your time and efforts and we look forward to it. Okay, we'll leave a few minutes to clear out and then.
Are you sure you don't want to stay for the food ordinance?
Thank you. I'm excited about the only thing. It's one of the fastest growing sports for girls too.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Okay, we recomposed. We're feeling good? All right. Right, so first the business items and, uh, we'll get back to item five, which is public hearings. This is public hearing five day. Uh, this is the first reading and possible introduction of an ordinance amending title six, the Health and Sanitation Code of the Cormodera Municipal Code. Out in chapter sixteen, requiring all food facility vendors to use reusable foodware for dine-in operations and compliant compostable foodware for takeout services. Is there a staff report?
Yes, there is. Um, thank you, Mayor Lee and, and council members. We do have a presentation as well that I'd hopefully we can few slides. Thank you. Um, uh, so just by way of, uh, background, we're here this evening, um, to introduce an ordinance based on council direction uh, to prepare a ma- modified version of the county reusable foodware ordinance and, uh, at its July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. This has been, uh, something, a conversation really, and I think a really good thoughtful conversation by, um, our council over the last six months or so, starting on February twenty-first, um, twenty twenty-three with a town council meeting where, uh, the council did receive a presentation uh, regarding the county of Marin model reusable foodware ordinance. And then the aforementioned, uh, July eighteenth meeting where we presented some options for the council to consider. Uh, and, uh, at that meeting, the council, um, provided us with direction to prepare a draft ordinance based on that discussion, feedback and commentary, um, by the town council at that meeting. We've also, um, continued to do outreach, um, throughout this process to local businesses, uh, and organizations, um, through notices, personal communications, some site visits, both with, um, help of some other, um, county staff. And then more recently, just mostly Rebecca and I, and we can speak to that, uh, later in the presentation. Um, and I just personally, I think, um, wanted to thank the council for all the time and I think the thoughtful dialogue, um, the direction you provided staff, um, and really the time spent, uh, digging into this challenging and complex topic. Uh, and then trying to understand really some of the complex issues around, um, trying to reduce waste and, uh, reduce plastics. Um, and I think it just really shows the importance this council, um, and the town place on waste reduction goals. And so, um, that's the background of where we've been. Um, and then what we are here tonight to discuss is the draft ordinance, which is attachment one to your, um, packet. So if you can go to, I, that was the background slides, the next, next slide. And I just wanted to provide a high level summary of what is in this, um, draft ordinance before you this evening. Um, this is sort of a, uh, there's, there's more to it, but I think this is attempting to really um, hit the more significant parts of the ordinance that's before you. And then if there are any questions on the specifics, happy to get into those later as well. So the, the first bullet um, requires that food facilities and, and one of the things that, you know, I want to thank Amy Ackerman as well for helping really with the drafting of this ordinance and simplifying it and trying to really use terms that can be easily defined, um, using state code. So we're defining food facilities, um, pursuant to the health and safety code. Um, and this is really about requiring reusable foodware and foodware accessories for dine-in restaurants. So if you're in a restaurant, um, that you're seated, seated there, you're going to be using, um, and required by this ordinance to use reusable foodware, not single-use foodware. Um, we are defining restaurants with, um, dine-in restaurants as those restaurants that have seating capacity for more than fifteen persons. Uh, this is sort of a nod to some of the very small, um, restaurants, or I should say there's one in particular, we've talked about through this process where, for example, a teaspoon, um, has about three tables inside. Um, but the vast majority of their business and even the business that uses the facilities are maybe sitting there for a, a moment, having half of their, um, their tea or beverage and then leaving with their, um, to-go product. Um, that gets to the next point. We are, the ordinance would require, uh, food facilities to use approved compostable foodware and approved compostable foodware is just defined uh, in the definition section of the draft ordinance. Um, and, uh, foodware accessories for consumption off premises. So, um, the definition of approved compostable foodware talks about the three types of, of, uh, approved compostable foodware that would be permitted. Um, that's, uh, encouraging really the top choice of natural fiber products being, um, uh, uh, one option. Um, the ordinance would also allow for BPI certified products. We talked about that at the last meeting, what those products are. Um, and then, uh, thirdly, uh, also, um, potentially other uh, certified compostable products, um, that were non, non-natural fiber products, similar to BPI certified products. Um, and those would be approved by the community development director at the community development director's discretion. And I think it's clear on the discussion that we've had, you know, natural fiber is preferred and, and town staff, um, um, would certainly encourage our local businesses to, um, use those products where available. Um, but also recognize, um, the utility of some of these other products that are, um, at least compostable under the right industrial processes. Uh, understanding that they're not, those don't necessarily exist in the county Marin today. Um, thirdly, on the bullet, uh, this would, um, ordinance would apply to food facilities again as to find serving food at permitted special events in town, um, such as Oktoberfest, Fourth of July, the, the car show, uh, that just happened and other special events, um, that received a special event permit from the town. Uh, it would also apply to food facilities that serve food at town facilities, um, in town, such as town park, um, caterer serving at the community center and so forth. Um, it would provide exceptions if products are not commercially available as determined by the community development director. This is very similar to the county's reusable ordinance, um, model ordinance. Um, uh, and then it incorporates provisions of state law, um, in a clear way, including provisions related to third-party delivery platforms. Uh, we talked about this last time. We would, would be enforced through local, um, uh, town staff would be the enforcement body. Um, and we have administrative citation processes built in. I can go into that a little bit. We did have conversations with county staff, um, regarding potential for, um, county staff to enforce our, the town's ordinance. Um, and really at this time, you know, given the operational challenges of having different rules in place across jurisdictions and the training challenges that presents to all their inspectors. Um, that was, uh, declined at this time, which was not unexpected. I think going into it, that was very clear and the county made that clear that if we were going to deviate, that would likely not, um, allow them to enforce our ordinance. Um, but I will say that, you know, we have a, a good relationship with county staff and environmental health services department there, um, the resources that they are using to educate and, uh, provide, um, resources for transition to compostable products. Um, they're still happy to provide those to town staff and, and we're happy to work together towards making sort of the um, transition to, um, products that may be necessary for some of the local businesses. Um, and you can see there's an effective date of July first, twenty twenty-four. Um, in general, I think the redraft of the county model ordinance does the following, um, tried to make it really, uh, simplify what we thought was relatively complicated language in the model ordinance. Um, and in, in really an attempt to make it easier to understand. Um, I mentioned it uses already definitions found in state health and safety code. Um, importantly, um, this gets back to what is allowable compostable products. It allows flexibility on products used in conjunction with off-premises food consumption. Um, but really less flexibility on complete exemption. So the county code, if you recall, if a product. if a product that was essentially um uh a natural fiber product for takeaway, um essentially packaging for to-go was not commercially viable, uh the county EHS staff could make exemptions or exempt such products because they were not commercially viable. Uh, in the towns, uh in those products were not required to be BPI certified or any other um um certified compostable um bioplastics or 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 what have you. So in this case, actually, the, the town's code would require those products if they are commercially available, which many more products are commercially available to be uh BPI certified. Um, so I think there's a little less flexibility on the overall exemptions to those products. Uh, I mentioned this, but we um this, this would be locally enforced. But um that really focuses uh our enforcement um in talk, talking about this with our team really would focus on education, collaboration with our food facilities and vendors. Working toward a waste reduction goals. I mean, we've already through this process really developed some strong relationships with our even, you know, with our food facilities in town. Certainly would continue to do that um and provide whatever resources we could um to help move in the direction that this ordinance would require. Um, we do think it's responsive to the comments we've received from local businesses throughout this process and really thank our local business community for sticking with us through this process, continuing uh to come to meetings, provide comments and feedback. And I think it does, at the end of the day, make significant strides toward waste reduction and transition to compostable materials. And with that, we also know that even if this is adopted, we need to monitor and assess how the ordinance is really affecting with these goals that are set out in this ordinance. Moving forward and whether it's working or not, whether other level levers need to be pulled in the future. Um, and also we can assume as, as um we've seen in the past with other ordinances where we try to get out ahead of um the state, we can assume that the state and other legislation may make it be coming down the line, which we'll have to adapt to anyways. So with that, uh, I wanted to, uh, we did just touch on the public comment and outreach. Um, we obviously did receive some written comments. Uh, one from Amy's on um, I think it came in on Friday, but it's in your packet today. Um, we did discuss, I know that was one of the uh local food facilities that currently doesn't provide reusable foodware for their dining facilities. Um, but through conversations with them, they uh recognize that this is a direction they need to go and are willing to go and work with the town toward that end. So I think that was great to hear. Um, and um, that will require some, some changes to their infrastructure at their facility, but um they're happy to do so and working in collaboration with the town on that. Um, and we also received a comment letter from uh the Sierra Club uh this morning, which I think you've also received, um, which I think just repeats some of the previous comments we got from uh this individual. Um, I think it was under a different title the last time. Um, there was comments there, so. Um. But nonetheless, happy to answer those. Any questions you have with in relation to those uh comment letters? And then Rebecca, do you want to comment on some of the other discussions we've had with um the town and chamber and and we've, we've done a lot of noticing to just try to get the word out again to all our local businesses that we are. Um, this, this is an ordinance that the town's working on and would love to get feedback, so.
Thank you, Mara and uh council members. Just wanted to summarize some of the outreach undertaken to date. We have approximately forty to forty-five uh food vendor businesses in town. Um, and working off that list, I compiled an email notification list. Uh, letters were sent via mail before early in the process, and then after that, communications were largely via email. Um. So prior to the February twenty-first, July eighteenth and September nineteenth meetings, uh, the businesses were emailed information about the meeting, a summary, the link to the agenda, the staff report, guidance on how to participate in the meeting in person or over Zoom, how to provide their comments to council. And the most recent communications also included a summary of the town's draft ordinance and the ways in which it differed from the county's ordinance to provide them background in case they um had thought it was, was the same as the previous messaging. Um, we offered to have meetings, phone calls, site visits, et cetera, several businesses to take us up on that. And Julie Kritzberger at the, the chambers executive director has been um tireless in her assistance to me and helping get the word out to uh businesses as she's able to also send my communications out through her channels on multiple occasions. Also, the managers at the town center and the village also forwarded our communications out to their food vendor. So they've had the opportunity to hopefully see it in several different channels. If they don't see my email, hopefully they saw others. Um, also outreach to the beautification committee and members were in support. And um, I know Adam spoke with the Lions Club and the women's club members were also at the beautification committee meeting. And um that's a pretty conclusive summary of the outreach undertaken to date.
Yeah, and I think, I think we've heard especially from the town organizations, no red flags. Certainly, there's more work to be done and attendance of other meetings. Um. Uh, upcoming to sort of explain further the details of the ordinance and some of the changes that would be required, but um, I think in general, uh, these are um as written, at least the ordinance that it's, it's something that I think our community generally has supports and wants to move toward. Um, it's just questions of how to do it. And so that's where I think staff can be helpful and and assisting with finding the right products and so on and so forth. So, and we're, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
I did want to add that the comments that we did receive back from restaurants um were supportive and the ones that uh had questions, the questions largely related to possible exemptions, uh business operations that would have been exempt under the county's ordinance and how that would uh carry forward under the town's ordinance and um staff pointed out that there are, is an exemptions clause included in our ordinance and that staff would have the flexibility to meet with individual owners and on a case-by-case basis to go over their, their concerns and uh, see how we can collaborate and work on the issues that may be impeding them from complying. Thank you.
Good work. I think we're happy to answer any questions you may have about the draft ordinance. Um. Oh, and the options here on the last slide. Thank you, Lorena. Um, really before you this evening, um options before you are to consider introduction of the ordinance uh system substantially as presented. Um, propose some modifications to the draft ordinance and direct staff to return for possible introduction at a later date. Um, or do not introduce the draft ordinance and provide further direction to staff at this time, so.
Okay, thank you, Autumn. Uh, open it up. Who wants to ask questions first? All right, good then.
Thanks. Um, can you just describe a little on the enforcement side of it, how that's going to work? And then I assume it's going to be our code enforcement people. How are you going to get them up to speed and all that?
Yeah, absolutely. I've been, you know, sort of providing them with drafts as we go along uh in this process. But yes, it would be uh our code enforcement team. I think it's actually it's actually a team effort. I think we'd actually also have our sustainability, uh, sorry, or climate action and adaptation coordinator, Phoebe Golden be involved on the education side. Actually, Martha has been involved in her previous line of work with a lot of um waste reduction recycling efforts. So I think there's a big push on education. I think a lot, all of us and town staff need to work on um understanding not only this ordinance, but what we can all be doing to sort of reducing our waste um in our offices, on town facilities, which we are doing and something that, and you know, our Phoebe's been helpful with. Lorena has a lot of experience actually in this, in this realm as well, working um on zero waste Marin um grants and and programs. Um, so there's a lot of already some good knowledge there, but but absolutely to your point, um, and this is one of the reasons why we have an effective date of July is like this will allow us to give, you know, have some time to build up that capacity, especially particularly in code enforcement. Um, but I, I do look at it as, you know, this isn't necessarily only our code enforcement officer. These are restaurants. I think we're fortunate and this is, goes to the local aspect of enforcement. We all visit all of these places kind of year round, uh, and they're all clustered relative, you know, yeah. Um, it's not like a huge geography where we have to go out and and like the county Marin must do, have to do. And so it's, it's I, I see this sort of as a team effort, really. Um, um, but at the end of the day, yes, our code enforcement would be the one to really, you know. Yeah, I, and certainly there's requirements in the, in the ordinance to, to take this very much as a, you know, warnings and a slow, a slow approach towards actually any fines or assessments or fees, but um yes, so hopefully that answers the, the question. We have time and we're prepared to do so.
Okay, I, I have a couple other. I think you also mentioned there that this also applies like Fourth of July, Oktoberfest, the special, special permit events.
Yes.
Whose is that? So I'll just give the car show, for example, Ryan sponsored, they bring in Amy's and picking the pickle. Is that on the lines to make sure that those vendors are um in compliance or is that up to the vendors? And then how does all that get communicated?
So it's going to be in, in a clause in the special event permit application form. So when you agree to, when you get your permit, that's going to be one of the commit, conditions that any vendors or food facilities that are serving food at these special events are required to comply with, we'll probably list the ordinance section. And it would be the responsibility um of the special event permit holder um to ensure compliance. Um, so that's how we would probably handle that situation.
Okay, and he also mentioned that applies to town hall or town facilities, correct? So I'm going back to lines for a minute. So if the lines are meeting twice monthly for dinners, does I apply to them? And then, I'm sorry, tag along question is, how much of this has been communicated, not just to lines, but other community groups that may be using that town facilities?
So there's a distinction here, and this actually is a distinction that's created in the health and safety code already in, in defining what a food facility is. So the, so currently um, food facilities are not um private clubs. Uh, I think it talks about religious institutions and and nonprofit organizations that um serve food to their members and guests. Um, but not to the public, um, no more than three times in any ninety-day period. This is something, we looked at this and you'll see in the code, we changed it to six times just because frankly, for town staff to be involved in monitoring how many ninety-day periods and how many times like Alliance Club has had an event or private club dinner there. It was something that I just felt like we don't want to get down to that gran- granular of enforcement. Um, and so that particular other clubs or nonprofit organizations that it's about, you know, six times in any ninety-day period. I think that speaks to the amount of waste we're talking about. It's not, uh, this isn't a food facility that's serving food every day at a restaurant. And so it still meets our waste reduction goals from that perspective. Um, I certainly think I'd also rather work with these organizations and nonprofits that are using our town facilities um on a sort of a collaborative basis, educate, let's get there together type of thing rather than through an enforcement mechanism. Um, so that speaks to the clubs. Um, that said, if you're renting the facility uh and you are bringing in a food facility such as a caterer, those are a caterer is, and that was in the, uh, we, we did hand out a sort of a revised, up-to-date um section of the health and safety clo- code, which um does include the, the word caterer as a, as a food facility. Um, those individuals, um, because it would be rented through an agreement with the town uh would be required to comply with the ordinance. I have to say, I'm not exactly clear if they are how that works in practice, um, what they're bringing in. It would probably de- depend on exactly how they're bringing their food in or what service they're providing. Um, whether it's a full-service sort of wedding reception or versus sort of bringing in a couple trays of food and for people. Um, those are sort of the nuance of sort of the the ordinance that I think we're going to have to work through and figure out as we go. Um, but hopefully that define, I think, um, answers sort of the distinction between the two. It really gets back to that definition of food facility.
So it sounds like the clubs are off the hook, the nonprofits. Um, are you still going to communicate, even though they don't have to comply with the law? Are you still going to communicate them? Because it seems like they should be within the spirit of the law.
I, yeah, I, we're doing melody. Um, who's the president of the Lions? Uh, sorry, Healy, sorry. Yes, thank you. Um. Yesterday, and I, we already talked about coming to one of the general meetings, um, or maybe an executive board meeting, I think it was, to talk specifically about how we can get there together and and work together towards you know, meeting those goals. So of, of reusable foodware, um, and uh where not possible. And that was the other thing I was thinking, if you wanted to use a mix of reusable foodware and some items that were um natural fiber, paper-based plates, for example, that would still be possible um through um, that would not be, I should say, it wouldn't be possible under the ordinance, but would be possible through an arrangement where we just sort of understand that work, so.
And then any thought yet on metrics, how you're going to measure the effectiveness or the ordinance? And is that, I know this, it won't go into fact until uh twenty twenty-four, but would you start now somehow with the metrics that there's some kind of a baseline before it actually starts?
I, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, but let me just say, I don't, I, so I think it's um one basic metric we could talk, we could look at is, is sort of identifying those food facilities and restaurants in our town that sort of already essentially comply. Um, and those that don't and sort of track that over time. I'm not exactly sure how we're going to track overall waste production or um, but certainly if there are restaurants um that currently do not use reusable foodware for their dining facilities, and then they switch, you know, through this ordinance um and through the effort that we're talking about here. Um, that's, those are sort of the obvious things that we could track, but larger uh other metrics in terms of waste reduction would be, I think, very difficult to track. But generally, I think what we're talking about coming back a year after effective date would be to explain and and talk about the experience as well with our local businesses and how it's being received and what's working. Um, how many, you know, code enforcement actions we may have had, may have taken um on certain facilities, those sorts of things we could report on.
Right, thanks.
So just a couple, um, in reference to the Sierra Club letter, which i- is a little concerning to me because I don't understand the BPI issue. We did hear, we've heard conflicting things about how um, I think Eli went and looked and found that if they end up in the compostable waste, they are composted. And now we're hearing that that doesn't happen. And I'm just wondering if you can explain what impact we are going to have on the waste stream uh as it relates to this, because I, I just find it all very confusing. I don't understand uh that part of the issue. And then my second question is, why wait till July twenty twenty-four? Can we not get this happening in January? Is, is there a reason why we have to wait till July?
The second one first, I'll just say that just, that just gives some more lead time uh for businesses to understand uh the regulations uh for code enforcement staff again to um, uh, for us to sort of be able to educate and explain and do sort of that knowledge transfer to our local businesses. So I think we felt that time was reasonable. Um. And uh, I, I think getting back to um the first question, I think that's a hard question about how it actually has enough, what effect it has. has enough, what effect it has on the waste stream. I will say, I think it's very clear that the products, we know that our redwood landfill does not accept the BPI certified, even though they may be compostable, they're not accepting those products. And so if those products are thrown into the regular trash, they will go to the landfill, right? And so they will act like regular trash going into the landfill. I think the comment from the last meeting, and I don't want to, you know, was that if by mistake, they ended up in a compostable trash recycling container at one of our restaurants and it got somehow to the composting facility, it would could be composted there. That's not going to be the sort of direct, we're not directing people to do that. I don't think anybody's going to be directing people to do that, but that is a, I think, is what we heard at the last meeting. The big the big change, I think, is going to be using reusables in for dine in restaurants. And that's going to greatly reduce, I think, a lot of the waste and and trash that is sort of single use sort of way of of dining that we see in some of our popular restaurants, frankly, in in town. And so I think that's going to have a significant impact there. But I think it's really hard to say, you know, how it's going to affect in general compared to what, you know, compared to the the county's order. I I don't know what we're comparing it to necessarily.
I just wonder how to how to answer that concern from the Sierra Club. I mean, how do we? I don't know. I mean, I I know you have and the staff has looked at this in great detail, and I totally respect that time and investment. I just still don't understand why we feel the need to be the one community that makes that exception right now. I mean, once the technology at the recyclers is up to speed, then these products will be able to be recycled or or I'm sorry, composted. But until then, does it make sense for us to?
That's a, yeah, and that's, I mean, certainly, that's a question you can discuss this evening and item that's not a question to staff.
Right, I'm sorry. It's more of a discussion item than a question, but it's it's because I have the question that I don't understand how how I should wait, how where I should be on it. I just don't, I don't understand it. Could be jet lagged, I don't know. Welcome back, by the way.
There may be. Is there more that staff would like to share on that question?
No, I think that's a, that's a open question. I think we're, you know, we were had this conversation at the last meeting. I think we were following some of the direction we got at that last meeting on that discussion topic. And I think, you know, frankly, we've heard comments from our local businesses and and one of the things to consider is that I think we're saying in this ordinance, and we put that clause in there specifically about encouraging natural fiber products over these compostable bioplastic products like the BPI certified products, hoping that that still gets us through the education and outreach to the point where some of these food facilities will use those products. Because again, we're going to be using the same resources that the county has for what natural fiber products are out there. We can be out there talking to our food facilities about those products. And then second down, if that doesn't work, then yes, there may be instances where BPI certified products are appropriate. And I think that's what we're saying, and that's what our that's how we're enforcing it, you know, right? So it's it's a little bit different between we're just saying encourage rather than making it a mandate. And I think we can see how that works. And I think there is an opportunity down the road if we're not seeing the council's not seeing the transition to natural fiber products at the rate that it hopes. There's also that lever to pull down the road too.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Okay, is there any other questions?
Just one question again on the effective date. So we're looking at an effective date of July first twenty twenty four, which is about presumably about a nine month runway for businesses to be educated and come into compliance after adoption. Is that nine months frame of time? Is that consistent with what we've seen other cities do with their reusable foodware ordinances? I think it was a little, I think several adopted in maybe spring, late spring, and they, I think the county's starting, I think they gave the date of November tenth, so maybe it was more like six months. Want to say, okay. Yeah, I think there was varying different time, I suppose, but about six months. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't have any questions. So seeing no other questions? I'll close the dice questions and open it up to public comment. Does anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment? Yes, please stand up.
Good evening, council members and city team. My name is Susan Hop and I am here representing the Sierra Club of which I'm a local member. And the Marin group of the Sierra Club consists of about fifty five hundred members. And many of us as part of the Sierra Club have been working on this issue of single use waste for some period of time. So I'm, I was here really to, I think, for the record and for the community to hear the letter, I think it's pretty important because we did spend time on this. And I wanted to also say, Councilmember Ravazio, thank you for bringing up an issue that I think we're trying to zero in on in in here, which is really, I think there's more homework to be done by the city of Corte Madera. And I want to just mention the reusable foodware ordinance was passed in May by the county, May of twenty twenty two. And by the end of this May, every single community in Marin County had adopted it. And I'm talking about San Rafael, Nevada, San Anselmo, Mill Valley, Fairfax, Larkspur, Tiburon, Sausalito, Ross, all of unincorporated Marin. And this means that except for Corte Madera, this would be a standard across all of Marin County. And we think it's a pretty great standard. It's a standard that has the goals of reducing, reducing single use foodware waste and also ensuring the integrity in our waste streams. And I don't know if you contacted a real stakeholder, which would be your hauler, Mill Valley Refuge Service, but I I hope that you all know that Mill Valley Refuge Service with Marin Sanitary and with Recology all got together to endorse the reusable foodware ordinance. And the reason they did that is because managing these waste streams of what's recyclable, what is landfill and what goes into com- compost is somewhat complicated. And for instance, Marin County's compost facility is certified organic. It doesn't matter whether it's BPI, something is BPI certified, they are not going to take bioplastics. BPI is the Biodegradable Product Institute. It does certify for compost some bioplastics, however, they take forever, they act just like plastics. And in organic certification, which we have, which aligns with the values of Marin County, they will not take it. They will not take BPI certified. So to your point, Councilmember Ravazio, that is the way it is. You can wish all you want, that's not going to happen.
Excuse me, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Can I at least read what show that product produced quality compost organic compost is used by local farmers who bring their food to our farmers markets, contributing to a circular economy. This is
refrain from using the board on. Please respect the three minutes. Is there someone else that would like three minutes? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane McDonough. I'm from the Plastic Free Marin Group. And we had a meeting recently and we had someone from Marin Sanitary there and also from Recology. And they both said, as she was saying, that in order to have organic compost, you cannot have any bioplastics at all in them. And he did a, he had a chart where he showed like a paper straw, a a plastic cup, all of that kind of stuff in in the chart and the plastic BPI stuff after two years was still, you know, sitting there with squash, but it was still in plastic form. We don't have any in our county. The industrial recycling or industrial composting, which it would take to break it down. And even if we did, they were saying that because it is bioplastic, which is still a plastic, that it has no nutrients that it's bringing to the soil. It's if there's no, all the organic materials, all there's no water that is being supplied by these bioplastics. And the whole reason for putting compost on soil is to amend the soil, to make it better. And what's the point of putting it on if it's not going to do any good? So we're not helping. We're not helping the soil by putting all that stuff on it. And if there's no market because nobody wants to buy it, it doesn't do any good and no one is going to recycle it if there's no one who's going to buy it. So there has to be an end buyer for it. And if the soil that is made from it is no good, what's the point? Now we've just wasted all this time and money. And so their point was that organic is the way to go. And even in places where they are taking, you know, they're taking the bioplastics, the cups, the silverware and all of that. They are in many, many facilities or many recycling programs are required by law to take them, but it doesn't mean that they're being composted. They were saying that often they just throw it out and it all goes to the landfill anyway. We thought it was doing a good thing by putting it into the compost bin, but they don't actually compost it because it it contaminates the the products that they have. So I think beyond, you know, I mean, I don't know, I just think that we're to do a good thing, we want it. We in Marin County, we're trying to do organics, we're trying to eat well. We all know the not only the plastics for pollution and environmental and climate change with fossil fuels and it's a greenhouse gas and all that, but our own personal selves, if we eat, not even eat, but if, you know, they say there's microplastics on the top of Mount Everest, there's microplastics in the placenta of babies, they're everywhere. And we need to get rid of them however we can. So I'm hoping that you will adopt the county's ordinance and go along with the rest of the county. And like Susan was saying, just make it consistent. Bingo.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's Jim Graham with Nothing Bunt Cakes here in Corte Madera. And I'm just really grateful for the council and that they take, they're taking the time to look at the ordinance in depth and and how it affects everyone. I think all of us want to get to that place. It's just, you know, how fast we, you know, breakneck speed to get to that, you know, and what it costs, you know, the small businesses and how it's being put on the backs of the small businesses. And and so with that, I I commend you. I mean, because like you mentioned, it wasn't just a rubber stamp like so many people have already done, whether they know about it or what's a good or bad or other options. And so I I commend you guys for for doing that. I think that's very important. It shows you care. You care about the community. You you care that you want to make change and be positive and move in a positive direction, which is fantastic. I think also by helping the community to recognize those people that are are in line with the ordinances that maybe there's a sticker, because I'm I'm a big believer in more of a a carrot than a stick. And so if you can give a a good reason for somebody to adopt these things and to be able to to go in line with it and and have customers recognize that and those customers say, hey, that's who I want to do business with because they're in line with this, then I think that would be a very positive thing as well. So I want to commend you for taking the time and energy to to look at this in depth and making the best decision for Corte Madera. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Damon picking a pickle usual. This is a frustrating one for me because I completely believe in the idea. But again, it just comes back to execution and practicality versus ideas. Everybody has ideas. I find it amazing that Sierra Club's ideas align with the garbage company has a contract they make money on that we're going to pay for. To me, that's really confusing. If Marin County wants to have one garbage, then they need to do it, you know, one way. If they want to be like every other county and create another one that can recycle it or stuff or break it down, then do it. That's fine, but this just comes back again to, I find it amazing, the sponsors who backed us, you know, Sierra Group's letter, all the people that benefit from this. Not all the people are going to pay for it. So that's amazing because normally it's the other side of the aisle that's complaining about that. So I've already switched back. I'm compliant now. I got a few little things like ketchup I need to get. Not package, so I'm not totally worried about it. I'm just more worried about the execution of things. How are you going to handle the fast food? How are you going to handle the person, my neighbor across the street from me without, you know, naming names of restaurants? How are you going to handle those multi unit chains who are already not compliant with state laws? Like you got so much to handle, it's not even funny. Who's going to force this? Are they just going to pay every year to say we're not going to be compliant? So me and five other guys in town are going to pay for this? Is that what's going to happen? I mean, like everybody else, I appreciate you taking the time to look at this, but I think there's just so much more. I mean, it's like not even close to where it needs to be. I don't even know where to go with it past that. I just, I've been over county looking. Nine other counties, nine other towns, they say signed off. Nobody's complying. I want the examples of who's compliant today. I've been visiting comforts. I've been visiting all these places. Who's complying? They're not complying. So I wonder who's complying? These nine other towns that signed off. Show me the compliance. I mean, you know, I moved open my location in Emeryville five years ago. I moved into a public market and they said, everybody has to be compliant. Everybody has to have, you know, these compostable products, this stuff, it's a public market, it all goes in the same trash. So I bought really expensive stuff. I'm using, you know, world centric fiber trays, all these things. I'm the one person out of fifteen restaurants who's compliant. So again, it's like, show me the compliance, show me the town compliance, show me the county compliance, show me comforts and compliance to see if it's working. And we can talk what we want, but which can't can't do. But if it's not actually doing anything, then this is for not, it's just, you know, money spent. Like I said, I'm already back to plates. I'm back to silverware and back to all that. I was going to do it anyway. I did it before COVID. But my problem is always execution. So I want to see the execution.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public? Seeing none, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
We have a hand raised from Bridget Clark. Bridget, go ahead when we are ready.
Okay, good evening. I'm Bridget Clark and I am a graduate of the environmental form of Marin class and foodware ordinance and the subject was what my project for my class with a partner and the, I applaud you for looking at trying to make efforts on this and what you're doing. There are a couple of key things that I, and I also am part of the Plastic Free Marin with Sierra Club to learn more as much as we can do to do the right thing. But one of the big ifs is the bioplastics that I I know that it's not truly compostable in the way that we wish it would. So I think we really need to look at that. And I was a bit concerned to see that one of the board members of Amy's diner is on the board of BPI. And I don't know how much influence they have on this. I'm just putting it out there that it was a question mark in my head. One of the things that I was thinking about with the ordinance that you don't have that the county does is that the twenty five cent charge for coffee or for cups is is that the 25 cent charge for coffee or for cups is really critical in the way that people's behavior changed when we put the price tag on the plastic bags. When we made the plastic bag ordinance in the county, people really did change their behavior because they didn't want to spend the 10 cents or whatever it was. So I think that by doing that, it does help people, especially even if we could just go with coffee cups, which people have changed their behavior with water bottles. You know, I think that that's really important to consider. And one of the vendors mentioned, you know, a positive approach, the carrot thing. Surf Rider does do something like that, just to FYI, maybe we adopt something that they're doing to be able to give praise to those that are doing the correct thing. And there is a lot of natural products being done in like New Zealand. Like you go to the airport, they only give you natural products. There's a lot of good examples, maybe not entirely in Marin, but elsewhere that are doing this sort of thing. And I could share that later with anyone. And then one other point I wanted to make was having heard from the haulers, they actually make more money if you put more in the landfill. If we put more of our, our goods in the green waste in a compost, that doesn't benefit them financially. So I just wanted to clarify on that because that's something I learned last week. And yeah, I just, I hope you will consider more of what the county ordinance. I mean, I would prefer you to adopt it. I realized you want to do something maybe a little different, but I just wanted to point out a few things that I've noticed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
We don't have any other hands raised on Zoom. Sorry, let me stop the timer, but we have an email public comment that wasn't submitted earlier. And I'll go ahead and start reading it. Dear Mayor Lee and council members, thank you for all of your efforts in creating a foodware ordinance that addresses the concerns of our community and will make a positive impact on our environment. We appreciate all of the time has spent reaching out to our restaurants and our businesses to obtain their input and listen to their concerns and ideas. We are confident that the ordinance will be embraced by our restaurants and appreciated by our residents as a reasonable solution that works for everyone and addresses our environmental concerns. The Corder Madera Chamber of Commerce is pleased to have been part of this process and will continue to work with the community on implementing the new ordinance. Thank you, Julie Kritzberger. And we don't have any additional public comment.
Okay, well, thank you. So we'll close public comment and bring it back to the dice for discussion. So I think the goal is to conduct a public hearing and do one of the three options that were provided by staff. The first being the introduction of the ordinance, the second being modifications to the ordinance. So the third is a rejection and rework within staff. Who would like to start off the conversation? Okay.
So I'm just going to go through my list of comments, not in any particular order. I want to say first of all, that this has been a very educational process. You know, reading the, the BPI information, reading information from the county and from the Sierra Club. It's, it's all been a great education. And what I, what I'm seeing is that as valuable as that is for me, I think that that's going to be just as valuable for the members of the community that this will affect. And I think that that will have a great effect on what choices they make. So like I said, in no particular order, I'm going to address some of the things that I've heard said. So first of all, I think that as products become commercially viable, we can address the ordinance again. And I'm sure the county may have an opportunity to do that as well. We live in a society that as soon as you make something mandatory, then developers come up with an idea that, oh, well, if, if people have to have it, I'm going to make it because I have a built-in customer. So I think that the products are going to change to make it possible that, you know, the fiber, foodware and accessories makers are going to be, they see which way the wind is blowing, just like the restaurant owners are going to see. As far as the idea with the July 24th or July 1st, 2024, I think that pushing it out that far is kind of a good idea because along with that idea of seeing where the wind is blowing, it will give some restaurant owners the opportunity to make the big change. Not just going with fiber, natural fiber, but to actually have dishwashers and reusables in their restaurant, which ultimately that's the best thing, not, not just having even the fiber goods. And then as far as how we might look at metrics, perhaps we could get that information from the recycler. Once they start to, you know, how much, how much recycled material or compostable material are they receiving now compared to what they will be receiving July 1st, 2025? So we might be able to get some information from them more than, you know, us trying to do some kind of metrics. And then I think there's also, you know, we're talking about the contaminants and contaminating the, the compost, but I think that's once again, an education question to keep the non-compostables. The, as I had mentioned before, and actually I saw one restaurant, I was at World Wraps over the weekend. And, you know, they know what their, what kind of plastic ware they might have, which they, actually they have everything on reusable. But I think there's maybe some things that people take out, but they have their bins not marked with, you know, the name, but the actual, a fork goes here, a knife goes there, you know, so you know, because that makes more sense. That's something someone can see in a second. And so that kind of, you know, picture Rama, for, you know, lack of a better word. I think that's going to really help people to put things in the right place and keep the contaminants out. And I mean, I guess this is a question, one of the, one of the callers mentioned the 25 cents and about the cups. And I'm thinking, I just don't know, would people bring their own cups to a restaurant? I'm just, just wondering how that would work. But anyway, that's kind of just my addressing the various, the various questions.
So would that feedback, would you, out of the three options, which are you most comfortable with currently?
I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward with our ordinance because I do think it's one of those things where people are just going, well, look, I am going to make, have to make this transition. This is which, this is the way the wind is blowing. And as they get more information about how they can make that transition, I think that people will do it willingly.
Okay. All right, thank you. So who would like to speak next?
I think what Damon said from his research is really important. I, I see the Sierra Club's point that Corder Madera seems to be the great holdout here, but I think the hasty way that the rest of the towns went ahead and said yes to this is an indication that they haven't really talked to their restaurants and that big restaurants doing a lot of business are not necessarily on board with this. And the penalties for non-compliance are so low that if I was one of those big restaurants, I'd look at it and say, look, Max, it's going to be $300 a year. We don't comply, so let's just let it ride and see what happens. Whereas here in Corder Madera, in our typical way, we've involved everybody. We've had long conversations, we've had in-depth, you know, meetings to discuss these things. And I think our restaurants are now aware that it's going on, wanting to get on board. Corder Madera restaurants want to do the right thing. And I think they're going to, and I think we are going to be ahead of the rest of the communities by the way we have gone about doing this in a very methodical, aggressive way. I do think we should do some kind of, you know, five star Michelin star for recycling to places like Pig in the Pickle to let the community know who are, who are real stellar performers are. But that said, I would still get rid of the BPI. I would still not include that because I just left London this morning. And there are, it is mandatory that you, they do these compost, this fiber, natural fiber. They're almost so thin, it doesn't even seem like wood, but they're everywhere. The, the fork, the knife and the spoon, and you can tell that they would be compostable just as easily as a, as a twig from a tree. So I don't, I don't think the BPI needs to be there now. And I think until our waste stream is really set up to handle it, there's no benefit for Corder Madera to, to continue to provide for that. So that's, that's where I am.
So in, you'd like number two, which would be an ordinance to move, never strike BPI support from the, or not support, but basically an acknowledgement or a use of it. Okay, all right. Who would like to speak next? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the speakers who engaged with us on this, not just tonight, but over the last several months from the business community, the environmental community, everyday residents who are interested in this. I think most of us are on the same page here in terms of our, our top priorities, reducing waste in the community. And I agree with a lot of the points that have been raised throughout this conversation. I agree with the, you know, the, the main thrust of the county's approach, which is that reusable is always best. We have taken that step here in our proposed ordinance and said, right, that if you're doing dine-in, it's got to be reusable. That's just common sense. I'm glad we've done that. Then what we've, you know, I, I agree with the county, natural fiber is the next best thing. I think the main difference, the most impactful difference between the Corder Madera ordinance that is being proposed by staff tonight and the county RFO is that where natural fiber is not an available product. So that's generally like things that have to contain liquid. Where natural fiber is not yet an available product, the county RFO allows plastic instead of BPI certified compostable materials. Corder Madera is proposing to instead reverse that and allow BPI certified compostable materials instead of plastic. If single-use items are going into the landfill, as is going to be the case under either the county RFO or the Corder Madera ordinance, until we have natural fiber products that meet all of our use cases. If products are going to be going into the landfill, I would prefer that those be BPI certified and compostable than plastic, than petrochemical plastic, right? You know, I think we see the environmental damage of the plastic industry all around us, right? We see PFAS pollution, we see forever chemicals in, as was, as was said earlier, in our water, in our baby's placentas. You know, I, I think that that is a real threat and that is why I cannot support an approach that continues allowing plastic, petrochemical plastics into the waste stream, into landfills, which is what the county RFO does until such a time as there are natural fiber products available that meet all of these, all of these use cases, right? Because the county maintains their exempt list where basically any items that do not have natural fiber products that meet those needs, again, typically products that contain liquid, those are exempt and can be plastic. I don't want to see that in Corder Madera. So given the circumstances that we have, which is that we do not yet have the, you know, access to, and Pat, correct me if you've seen differently, but I don't think we have access to natural fiber products that serve all of our use cases like soups and things like that. That's, you know, that's what we've heard previously through, through presentations. That's my understanding, but definitely let me know if you disagree or have heard otherwise. But if that is the, the circumstance that we find ourselves in, then I think the only way that the ordinance we're proposing tonight could get any better for the environment is if we clarified and said, it's not natural fiber or BPI. It should be natural fiber and BPI only if natural fiber is not an available option for that product. So what I would like to see is, is sort of a more narrow tailoring of what we're proposing here tonight, where it's not, you can do either natural fiber or BPI. It's, you have to do natural fiber if there is a natural fiber product. If there isn't, it can't be plastic, it's got to be BPI. To me, that's the only way that this ordinance could get any better, given these cert, given the circumstances that we are in right now. And I, you know, to, to Rosa's point, I very much hope that this becomes a moot point within a couple of years as we see innovations in the foodware industry, as we see new technologies and new products come online and come into the market, where I'm very hopeful that we will get natural fiber products that can meet all of these use cases. But until, you know, and, and if and when that happens, we can come back and I hope we will and phase out BPI, just like we're proposing phasing out plastic in Corder Madera here tonight. So, you know, that's kind of my stance. With regards to enforcement, completely hear you, Damon. And I mean, it's, it's got to be fair, it's got to be equal enforcement for everyone. We can't have some businesses simply choosing to flout the ordinance and skate by. That's not right. And I'm really, I'm, I'm glad to hear what we're hearing from staff where we have frankly, Corder is a small town. We have a very manageable business community and we have a good relationship with our business community. So I'm glad to hear from staff that we don't foresee any issues in terms of our ability to be a collaborative partner, working with businesses to make sure that we can get everybody compliant. You know, and, and I also want to commend staff on just the, the streamlining of definitions in this ordinance. You know, for me, that comes back to kind of a similar thing to what we did where we, you know, struck down at our last meeting, a redundant ordinance. It's, it's making things simpler, it's making it simpler to exist and abide by the rules in town. It's, you know, I, I would call it conscientious government. And I really appreciate that you guys went out of your way to look at not just the policy side of what we're doing here, but also look at the, the nuts and bolts of how can we make this easier for residents and businesses and, and environmental advocates to understand and digest and comply with. So thank you very much for that. I, I, the last thing I want to say is I, I do want to acknowledge the very real point that was brought up, that even the ordinance that I am suggesting, which is what we're proposing, what we've already proposed here tonight, but clarifying that it is only BPI if natural fiber is not available. That doesn't solve the larger problem, which is that our waste haulers and our composter do not openly accept these things, do not want these things, right? My research has shown that if they end up, as Adam said, by mistake in the compost, they will compost if they are BPI certified. Not all bioplastics will, but my research has, has, you know, led me to believe that BPI certified bioplastics will compost at the facility that we have here, but they won't take them. That, I, I'm not going to pretend that this solves that problem, but the county's approach doesn't solve that problem, doesn't even contend with that problem. You know, we've at least, I think, taken a step. What we really need to see is leadership at the county level with regards to, you know, I think Susan put it really well. I think it was ensuring the integrity of the waste stream, right? That's what we need to do. We can't do that at the local level. We need to do, that has to be done at the county level, right? The county needs to figure out how to get us access to a composting facility that can take BPI certified products until we don't need them anymore, i.e. until there are natural fiber products that meet all of our needs. And, you know, that's not going to be easy to do. I understand that the county's already looked at potentially expanding the Redwood landfill site to see if they could do it there. And, and because of environmental constraints, they weren't able to. I understand that, but there are other sites in Marin County where a composting facility could be built. There are other counties in the Bay Area that are already composting these materials at their facilities. We could look at sending our compost to those facilities. We could even look at paying those facilities to take our compost if they need to expand their facilities in order to be able to accept our compost. We could even look at going to WM Earth Care, our own composter and saying, we understand you don't want to take these bioplastics. I don't want to say bioplastics because we're not talking about incorporating all bioplastics. We're talking about incorporating a very specific subset. But we could go to WM Earth Care and say, if we wanted to, as a county, we will pay you the difference when you sell your compost. You know, what you would make selling certified organic versus selling what you're already selling, plus some small amount of BPI waste in there. We could say, we'll subsidize you and pay you the difference in that. I don't think that's been looked at. So my point is that there are levers at the county's disposal to actually make a change here in terms of ensuring the integrity of our waste stream. And I'm not seeing that leadership happening. And I don't think it's fair to just punt that onto the towns, knowing that the cities and towns don't have the means to make that happen. So that was a very long, long way of saying, that's why I'm comfortable with what we proposed tonight with the one tweak that I would really hope we consider of just clarifying BPI is not, instead of natural fiber, is only if natural fiber is not available. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So that's a number, that'd be number two with a modification.
Yeah. What, what I would consider, I, I think a slight modification.
So that was, that was a wonderful dialogue and it belted on yours. Did you want to respond to that as far as whether you?
Let's hear from Fred.
Okay.
First, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm going to keep it simple. That's okay. Like does a great job and I think you have a lot of expertise on this and you tell you're not, you don't just have the expertise, but you're also very passionate about it. I can, I can just tell in your voice. That you don't just have the expertise, but you're also very passionate about it. I can ju- I can just tell in your voice. So I'm okay, I think, with our ordinance. I don't think we should go to switch to a county. I think all the work staff has done. Interacting with the businesses, I think it's all great. I think in the long run, the businesses are going to do what's right and try to, you know, to comply with the ordinance. If I heard Adam right earlier, I think he said our new com- community development officer or person. Will have a certain amount of flexibility on which she can improve. So I think there's flexibility built into that. I thought the July first date first was kind of far out there, but it kind of putting in perspective what's nine months. I'm okay with that. I would uh support what Eli is saying. I think it makes sense, and I think it's kind of like the the solution, and it's the fit for now. For the point of where we're at. And from what I've heard from other towns, I would agree with some of the comments that I made where. The county pushed this down, all these other towns enacted it, but I really don't know which restaurants are actually complying with it. And that's what's going to be interesting when it hits in November and they're forced to comply. I mean, there's a lot that are going to be in compliance. So I think at least our ordinance makes sense and it makes sense for our businesses and our community. So I'm at number two with the amended changes Eli made.
Okay.
We're suggesting.
All right.
And I would, I would agree with that. I think Eli's hit on a really nice compromise there, that it's only possible, only okay to use the BPI. If natural fiber is not available, because two years or four years being composted still beats four hundred and fifty years. That petroleum plastic sits there in the landfill, so. And and I do think that the county should step up and take more responsibility for its ordinance so that. We're not diverting a lot of plastic into, I mean, we're not creating more plastic waste. They're giving that big out to um the restaurants.
Thank you for that. Okay.
So do we have some idea of what types of products are currently available? In say either both BPI and natural fiber or?
So I would say that the county has offered to provide that guidance as far as education, right, from what I understood from staff. And then also I think we would have six months to also come into or nine months with with our with our staff that are highly knowledgeable. And either to basically look into that.
Okay.
To help us, right?
Mary Lee is is correct with that that statement. The county has a uh Google spreadsheet that is uh continuously updated as new products become available. Um, and it for the natural fiber compostable, that that list doesn't include uh BPI certified plastics. But their their list is comprehensive in all the various iterations of natural fiber compostable. Products that are available to our restaurants.
Okay, I'm just wondering once again on the on the education piece of it. You know, how. Restaurant owners would know, you know, do I have a choice between natural fiber and BPI?
Was she done?
Eli knows.
I just have an idea. So I I think. Because the the way the county RFO is set up, it says basically you've got to use natural fiber if it's available. If not, you're exempt and you can use plastic. We can basically use the county's existing exempt list to tell us. What things aren't available in natural fiber and therefore in Corte Madera need to be BPI. And and the reverse of that is we can use the county's purchasing guide that they've put together, which shows all of their natural fiber products that they know of. We can provide that to our businesses and say, here's here's the list of everything that we know of that you can get in natural fiber. If it's not on this list. You know, then presumably it's exempt and and in Corte Madera, BPI in the rest of the county may be petroplastics.
Okay, great. Sounds good.
That would be my idea for just like keeping it simple and not reinventing the wheel, right? Trying to use county resources.
So does, given that feedback, do you think you could also support on number two, which is that modification?
I do.
Okay, so then a part of it is is to staff. Is that a modification to the ordinance that could be accepted tonight in the first reading?
If we can articulate it and read it into the record. We can, and then I would recommend for our second meeting, rather than put the item on consent, we put it on. Uh, for reading, I think we can. Um, but I think we would need to be able to. Articulate today on the record what the change is. And I'm.
Vice Mayor was the one that put it forward, so I. So 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 like, you know, if I'm I'm happy to allow them to try to word that correctly. So we can proceed with the number two and then consider it if we'd like. Sounds like the council's.
Eli said it really well.
Happy to take a stab at that, but I also am wondering if there needs to be something in addition written into the ordinance. Around basically incorporating the county's existing exempt list and purchasing list.
No, I I I think that's just goes into the practical application of of how it's enforced. But certainly I, that's that's how we would intend to utilize those resources. Exactly. Okay, then. So I think it's, I think we're looking at the improved compostable definition. Okay, trying to rework that in order to actually almost have a. Sequential way in which you.
Right.
Try to um identify what's acceptable.
Mayor, if um if it helps, you can take a five minute recess and then come back.
Would that be helpful to staff and you like to work on that?
Okay, so why don't we take a five minute break?
Editing break.
So bring back to order uh the the regular meeting of the town of Corte Madera. So we're in deliberation and we're about to make a uh amendment to the ordinance. Eli, do you feel comfortable making uh that reading into the record?
I am happy to move to introduce an ordinance amending Title VI. Uh, of the Corte Madera municipal code by adding chapter six point ten, requiring all food facility vendors to use reusable foodware. For dine-in operations and compliant compostable foodware for takeout services as amended. In the way that is about to be described by our town attorney.
Yes. We the the in the we are amending the proposed ordinance. To amend the definition of approved compostable, that is. Section six point ten point zero ten subsection A. And the amendment, rather than read what's the strikeout and everything, I will provide that to the clerk. I'll just read the new definition. Um, I think it will be clearer for people. Approved compostable means that an item or product is intended for disposable after one use. And is made of natural fiber. In the event that a natural fiber product is not available. An approved compostable product means a product that is BPI certified. Two, has other third party product certification approved by the community development director or their designee. To ensure that the item is free of harmful chemicals, including but not limited to fluorinated chemicals. That may have been used in foodware manufacture. For purposes of this definition, fluorinated chemical. Means a class of fluorinated organic compounds containing at least one fully fluorinated carbon atom. Also known as oh perfluoroalkyl. Subsection PFQA or OA, sorry, and polyfluoroalkyl. Parenthesis PFOS substances or PFAS chemicals. For purpose of this definition, natural fiber means a plant-based, non-synthetic fiber. Including but not limited to paper, wood, bamboo, palm leaf, wheat straw, or sugarcane. With no plastic.
Excellent. Thank you for that. So do we then want to uh? Would that make a motion?
I I believe we have to have a second.
Oh, it was the second. You moved that. Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. So uh with this, we we do a vote for the first to approve this new modified. Uh, ordinance for this, the first reading.
We're voting to in approve first reading and introduction.
Excellent, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mary Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Charles, would leave, I may. I just want to make a quick comment. I hope the woman that was here that spoke past the three minutes. Can't remember if she's speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club, but if she was, I hope she's not representative. I don't think she is of the entire Sierra Club. Because I think speaking past the three minutes and trying to outspeak the mayor was disrespectful to the mayor and also to this town council. And I just hope it doesn't happen again. Thanks.
Thank you, Fred, for that. So with that, that closes uh the public hearings and we'll move to item number seven, which is council reports. Town manager report, Adam Wolf.
Thank you, uh, Mary Lee. I just wanted to briefly. Comment uh and update the council on um. My attempts to communicate with the United States Postal Service. Um, and I know that has been something that. Our community has been hearing and frankly, our staff has been. Sort of uh hearing from employees of the postal service down on Pixley um about. Potential closure um and relocation or and when that may happen. I think it's been reported to our own staff uh from their employees that. Things such as uh closure is going to happen in February, et cetera, and and they need to find new new uh employment opportunities elsewhere. Those I I I will say, um, I've been working and as I I put out a statement, I think on February, I'm sorry, September first. To our community, just explaining what my communication um has been with the United States Postal Service. Over the last year, um, and actually before that, you know, I know this is an issue that myself, Todd. Kusamano before me and town managers before him have been working on to try to address some issues there. But just in terms of the most recent communications, because I know our community has um. Is sort of starved for real information here, and I think it's unfortunate that we are struggling to really get. Good information from our uh the USPS and their leadership and their failure really at this point in time to. Speak directly to our community despite the fact that their own employees are sort of spreading some information um around town. So I I continue to try to um get that information from. Um, the district director in San Francisco. Been in contact with Huffman's office. I know they are trying to as well get some information out to our community. Um, but we are uh sort of stuck in. What I understand are sort of communication protocols in their own organization that are not allowing them to really release any information to them, to us at this point. I hope, uh, I've been told that maybe in the next couple of weeks, we should get some real information about what the actual plan is. And again, just for your all, I I mentioned this in my message, but. What we've heard, um, and Amy's been involved in these conversations as well. Um, is that they are pursuing a bifurcated model where that they would. That would keep a retail operation in Corte Madera. Um, but move the back of house operations elsewhere. And that in some ways, as I mentioned in that statement, I think is a potentially good creative solution. But I hesitate to even entertain that because it's so hard to get actual real information from them at this time. So I, um, you know, just wanted to let the council know where we are with that. It's unfortunate, um, but hopefully. You know, we'll be there soon with some more real information that I. Uh, we can get out to our community and actually I, what I prefer is that the postal service actually do that directly to our residents. Um, so I wanted to report on that. Um, uh, other than that, we've had um a lot of with back to school. There's been a lot of discussion around just. You know, people need to pay attention on the streets and driving um too fast through residential roads. Uh, obviously, our BPAC uh committee recently um had a conversation about e-bikes and sort of their proliferation. And and sort of hazard hazardous driving conditions throughout um all all around town and on paths. Those are conversations that I, um, you know, we've been trying to put out public messaging on all our platforms. Uh, again, starting to have some dialogue internally about what potential options might be uh to address some of those concerns. Um, and um, we'll continue to have those discussions and conversations about. Uh, best solutions moving forward, but you know, just want to let the council know that that's. Um, something that is on staff's radar and we're doing what we can right now to sort of. Start to um assess what's possible there. So with that, I will end my report.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, council reports, you want to start first?
Don't have a a lot. I also attended the BPAC, the last BPAC meeting on e-bikes and. Um, folks asking about a guardrail next to on on Paradise. Um, on the wide sidewalk, that was ve- very interesting meeting and some very interesting suggestions on. The e-bikes. Um, and then I also uh attended a meeting of the council of a US Latin American relations. Which was also a very enlightening um bit of business.
Okay.
I attended no meetings, but I um I'm really hoping that we'll have a great turnout for our first. Ever classical music community picnic on Sunday, September twenty fourth, right behind the dog park in Town Park. I just looked it up. It's going to be seventy-five degrees and mostly sunny. The San Francisco Academy Orchestra will be playing. This are the musicians that are working to get into the San Francisco Symphony. And it will support their scholarship fund. Uh, the town is sponsoring this uh with the Parks and Rec Commission. And we are going to set up a couple of picnic tables there. If anybody wants to bring treats or snacks to share, we'll have a little community. Hotluck going on. Um, we do ask nobody bring dogs, just because people's picnicking on the ground with picnic blankets and dogs don't mix. And uh also no glass containers. That's actually an ordinance in our parks that you can bring beverages. You can even bring wine, but you should decant it into something that's not glass uh before you bring it to the park, hoping for a great turnout.
Thank you.
I kind of lost track of stuff. So I attended the H40 monthly meeting, also attended the um celebration for those of our residents that are over ninety. A column or senior seniors. I think I had fourteen to sixteen of them. I think most of us were at that event. I appreciate Charles and also supervisor Redani, who gave him certificates and they got read bios, um, music. It was really a nice event. Also attended a MWPA board meeting. I also attended two tours that they did. Um, one was of a project they're doing in Saratoga. Again, it's all related vegetation management. And another one was out Stinson Beach, and that one was actually done in conjunction with the National Park Service. And I attended the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. Um, the only thing was we updated the agreement with Central Rent Fire Department. And then attended um Ren Transit Board, two things there. The underway for a field collection study, which they hope to get through by the end of December or so. Um, and then also it looks like on the the two 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 thousand twenty-four bus stop improvement, the bus stop at Meadow Suite in Tampa Pius. Is on that schedule. Um, also attended Parking Rec uh Commission meeting, and we'll have the master plan coming us hopefully at our next meeting, if not the meeting after. What else is there? Oh, and also attended the Lions Car EV and Classic Car Show. Adam was there. So I was, I think Charles was there. Quite a few people there. There's about two thousand in attendance. Um, largest event we had so far, fifteen EV dealers, hundred and eight classic cars. Food, music, um, it all worked out well, and three of our local dealers actually had sales that day. Um, so everybody was happy. So thanks. That's it.
Great job, Frank.
Um, uh, on August twenty-third, I was in Sacramento representing Corte Madera at the Cal Cities uh annual lobby day. We spoke to a number of legislators, including our own Assembly Member Damon Connolly and our Senator Mike McGuire. Um, about a number of different bills of concern uh that would affect Corte Madera. Uh, just one that I want to highlight for the council is a. California constitutional amendment being proposed once again by uh an interest group called the California Business Roundtable. Uh, which if passed would, as it would raise the voter threshold needed for communities to pass local sales taxes. And my understanding is it would also strike down um on effect any sales taxes that have been passed previously at a lower threshold. Uh, so they want to raise it to, I think, sixty-seven. Our own Measure F sales tax, which provides us, is is like one of the backbones of of Corte Madera's. Uh, you know, town finances would be struck down. If this passed, it would put Corte Madera and other cities like us in a financial crisis overnight. Um, so this is is a really big deal and I just wanted to highlight that um for folks that is probably going to be on the ballot. Um, on August thirtieth, uh, we had a uh Central Rim Sanitation Agency meeting. We did our annual evaluation of our uh general manager there. He is continuing to do great, uh, made some reforms to the pension policy and post-employment benefits. And we've got uh some uh labor negotiation items underway there. Um, that is it. Also attended the the fun uh events that. That is it. Also attended the the fun uh events that Fred mentioned. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I did attend the 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 uh, and then a generic and then a centenary. It was the first time I've gotten to do it. It's it's, yeah, and one, a one hundred and six-year-old too, so. Uh, amazing. They told lots of amazing stories. We have such a great, rich uh history and culture here, and it was just really a privilege to be able to get to know them a little bit better and honor them. I also have been attending the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, the fiscal health is good. I think they're looking forward to an Oktoberfest um that they were uh as a community. And uh, yeah, that was good. Uh, one thing is on the agenda, we didn't have it as, but um this month, I just wanted to bring awareness that it's uh suicide prevention month. Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. I lost my father and my grandmother before him also multiple times. Uh, tried to attempt, um. So I think it's pretty important. So with that, I'll close my reports. Yeah, and with that, um, we'll move to the discussion of draft agenda for. I didn't want to share that that's a treatable disease. And that's why I told you it's important to bring it up. Yes, so I'm not talking about it, but I think that's the last people I want. Okay. So
I I have one question on the agenda, upcoming agenda. It says presentation, home match, and then there's a business item, home match. I assume it's the same thing, that'll probably just be under one or the other?
Yes, I think we're gonna probably consolidate them. I I always go back and forth as whether to lump them together uh like we did today or or separate them out, but I think we'll, sometimes it depends on how long the agenda is, so, but um, it will likely be lumped together into one.
Okay, thanks. And then secondly, this will be moved as a business item based upon Amy. Okay, thanks. That's it.
Okay, so with that, we'll close the discussion of the draft agenda uh in the gentleman. Well, yeah, so I gotta bring that back into order, right? Yeah. Uh, if you guys want to stick around for sanitation district, please feel free if you'd like. Thank you.
Go from garbage to two years.
All right, are we ready? Okay. I'd like to move on to the sanitation district number two, the subsidiary district of the Town of Corder Madera. A regular meeting for Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, starting at nine eight fifty. Uh, call to order.
Board member Casissa?
Here.
Board member Avasio?
Here.
Board member Thomas?
Here.
Vice President Beckman?
Here.
And President Lee?
Here. Uh, so open time for public. Uh, if there's anyone in the public that would make, like to make a public comment, uh, not on the agenda, you have three minutes. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a a statement? All right. Uh, is anyone online?
Person online, no hands raised, and no email public comment.
Okay. All right, so with that, we'll close public comment. Uh, single presentations, uh, we'll move to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the district board staff or parliament requests to remove an item for discussion. Rescheduling the item will be at the discretion of the president or the district board. Is there anyone on the count, uh, commission, uh, district board that would like to pull an item? No? Is there one uh in the program staff that would like to pull an item? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Okay, make the motion appropriate consent calendar.
A second.
Can we get a vote?
Heard Councilmember Thomas, um, Board Member Casissa?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Beckman?
Yes.
President Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Okay, so with that, uh, I see that we have no public hearings or business items. Uh, there is no district manager uh present this evening. Do we have any board member reports? Seeing none, uh, any uh discussion for the draft agenda? Okay, so with that adjourned.